Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please. Mayor Bailey here. Mr. Bateman.
Here.
The Goodyear.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Mr. Ori. Vice Mayor Phelps.
Here.
Mr. Ping.
Here.
Can we have a motion to excuse Councilmember Ori?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Call the roll, please. Mr. Bateman.
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps.
Yes.
Mr. Ping.
Yes.
Mayor Bailey. Yes. Motion carries six to zero. Welcome, everyone. With us tonight, we have our Director of Finance, Mark Medler, Assistant City Manager, Chris Weinich, Clerk of Counsel, Misty Clark, City Manager, Dave Kennedy, City Solicitor, Joe Braun, and our Chief of Police, Michael Gabrielson, former councilmembers Kent Blair, Todd Osborne, and Pat Mays. So, welcome, everyone. First up is open forum, Deidre Hazelbaker.
Hello. My name is Deidre Hazelbaker, and I live at 101 Ash Street. When this Riverside property first came forward, it was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission with consideration for a special planning district. At that time, it looked like possibly the development may proceed, but the community came together and responded. The Riverside Protection Group was created. It's been one of my most meaningful engagements in Loveland. We filled the council chambers at that planning and zoning meeting. Residents stepped up, and we ensured the voices were heard. Many organizations and experts joined us at the table, and together we laid out our environmental concerns and the value of protecting this land. To their credit, the Planning and Zoning Commission members listened. They heard the residents, and they stopped that process. That was a powerful moment. The neighbors coming together. I remember sitting at the Isaac Walton League, and it was just a beautiful, like, people from both sides of the aisle. Nobody cared. We just came together with one purpose and agenda to work on what we would love to see in that area unprotected. And so, as we did that, we really have come together and had those conversations. And tonight really does feel significant because instead of that SBD and this new development, we're looking at this permanent protection on the riverfront through the Clean Ohio Grant. That's exactly what the residents wanted. I remember that coming out. How do we get the right land conservation commissions in here? How do we make sure that the funds are there to make sure that it's protected? And so, I do, one, just deeply appreciate that the city continued to work on that and the Schildemeyer family for leaving a lasting legacy. I strongly encourage council to vote yes on this resolution. Protecting these four acres along Riverside is the right step for our river and our community. I do also have a few questions to consider as we get further into the process. On the funding, the memo outlines a local share of about $150,000. Can you clarify how that will be covered in the 2026 budget? Or if it would be in a different budget? And if the appraisal comes in higher or lower than expected, how will that impact the bargain sale portion of the city's match? And then, for long-term stewardship, I know the Little Miami Conservancy will manage the easement buffer, but who will be responsible for the remainder of the property? And how will things like invasive species removal or the bank stabilization be prioritized and funded? On the existing structures, since the plan includes that removal, is there a timeline and a cost estimate for that? Are those expenses already factored into the project? And is there any maybe use for some of those buildings that could be there? And on the community access, while this is primarily for conservation, as it's outlined in the plan, will there be opportunities for passive recreation, like walking paths or river overlooks? And how will the city balance that with the conservation restrictions? I don't raise these questions as major concerns to stop this process, but just as a part of ensuring that it becomes a sustainable success story for the river and our residents. So, I look forward to your vote on that project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is review and approval of minutes from the August 26th meeting. Are there any changes to those minutes?
Move to approve as written.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please. Mr. Goodyear.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps.
Yes.
Mr. Ping.
Yes.
Mayor Bailey. Yes. Mr. Bateman.
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Mr. Kennedy.
So, for council is a memo and a resolution. It's actually a multifaceted resolution because where we are in the process. But I put out in the memo that we've got approximately 400 acres of green space, which is actually not accurate when you factor in the portions of subdivisions within the city that have land dedicated to the city. It's a much larger amount of property. We once, one of the things that we have been working on, actually, for quite a long time, and backtrack a little bit, 200 acres of that is up on the former Grail property. And I think you could potentially argue that that may have been one of the most beneficial annexations that the city has done in a long, long time by bringing that property into the city. Not only have you, through Cardinal and Claremont County, created perpetual land space, but it set up the possibility that someday, long down the road, the city school district will actually say in the boundaries. And that's sort of a win-win. You've got a long-term, you know, obviously you've got a long-term major employer. So, I've mentioned Cardinal and Claremont County because they were able to purchase their portions of the Grail property through the Clean Ohio Program. We have been exploring the Clean Ohio Program, actually, for some time back. Met with the Schildemeyer family shortly after the zoning. And we sort of broached the subject about the possibility. Of course, at that time, we were talking about something that wasn't going to happen until mid to late September. So, we staff began doing all of our due diligence. And one of the things we knew right away is that this is an extremely competitive program. And so, we reached out to Little Miami Conservancy. We got some assistance from someone in another county who was able to help us with some of the wording and some of the target points. And the Schildemeyer family, from the very get-go, has been extremely supportive. I don't think, and I mean this with all honesty, I don't think they're supportive on the standpoint of the financial side of it. I think they were supportive on the standpoint of, once we sort of explained how the program would work, they were supportive in the sense that that was something that they saw would be good for the city. So, the property is very unique in terms of meeting what the Clean Ohio Program is all about. It's got flood, within its four acres, it includes portions of the floodway, portions of the floodplain. It lies above a sole-source aquifer. It has slopes that draw water both into the river, but to replenish that aquifer. It's all along a riparian corridor. And uniquely, and it wasn't until it was pointed out to me by Little Miami, it's also the site of a river scour. Didn't know what the word was until we learned this, but it shows you how the Obana Creek actually has created a river scour. And that sort of led us into, what could we do to try to make this application even more competitive? Well, what we're working on with Little Miami Conservancy is through a conservation easement, they would manage, the city would own if we get the grant, but they would manage a stretch along the river. And within that, they have very detailed requirements of what they would do, what they would maintain. And multiple things, and of course, invasive species is sort of number one. And that's a big part of it. Things that they can do to protect that scour. And it's funny, if you ever look at it on an aerial map, once it was pointed out to me, it's very obvious. Their muscle, what they've been doing with mussels in the river, has been a big thing. This would give them an easy access point to continue their placement of more and more mussels because I had no idea how important mussels are to the river until Jason would send me, I would get information, he would talk about those kind of things. So, that was what we feel is, the declaration of restrictions by nature are, they're required. It's a requirement for the grant application that you don't sign it, but you say that you will execute it if you're funded. And you're actually encouraged to put added restrictions on there. So, why, we've put on added restrictions for our engagement with Little Miami Conservancy if we're funded. And then, they also want you to talk about what would be some of your future uses if you would get it, and then, any other insurances. And for us, of course, it would be the removal of the insurable structures. So, all the insurable structures would be removed from that. It is, we think that this additional layer that we're putting, we would put on this application for Little Miami Conservancy, A, it provides the city with local matching funds, but it also, and it helps our application, but it looks at that one particular stretch of the property that is the most ecologically sensitive and says, you know what? We're going to do up and above what the declarations of restriction says through this, covenants through the conservation easement with Little Miami. So, the way the program works is the grant is broken down through a 75% grant request and a 25% local match. Local match can come from any bargain sale, so we have a set amount. Anything over, then that would be donation, also called a bargain sale, city funds, and Little Miami Conservancy easement proceeds. One of the things that we've realized through all of the research that we've done is that it behooves the city's application to potentially ask for less than the 75% local match. And that is something we're trying to do based upon how the final numbers come out before the 19th. We've got the application far enough along that now we're simply tweaking it, looking for additional. Went down the other day, and we took all of our required photos. And we're doing, met with Little Miami Conservancy today to go over a few more details with them and trying to button this all up. And it is an extremely unique opportunity, but I obviously say it is an extremely competitive program. And by no means is the city going to get funded. But if we were funded, obviously, we would remove the structures. We would, you know, we would start planning. One of the benefits and one of the questions that I think that was a slam dunk for the city was, how does this, what is the public linkage to other public spaces? And that one sort of wrote itself because it's connected to Little Miami River. It's connected to Veterans Park. Because of sidewalks, it is connected to the East Lovin' Nature Preserve, Nesbit Park, Little Miami Bike Trail. And obviously, it also, Little Miami Conservancy owns some land up on the bike trail. It was, that was an easy one to sell, explaining how this would do this, but how this pedestrian connectivity could make this actually a regional project. This land could be enjoyed by residents of other areas, Sims Township, Miami Township, once all the connectivity goes in. So, that's pretty much where we're at with it. We feel that this is a very unique opportunity that we're, quite frankly, being given by the Schildemeyer family. And whether we are successful or not, we're certainly going to say, when it's submitted, that we submitted the best application we could. And Chris and Kelsey and myself have been working on this regularly. And we sit in the room, we go over the narratives, and we try to figure out how we could tweak it. Is there something we're missing? And so, that's pretty much it at this point. As you see in the legislation, I kept it, I had to keep it somewhat open-ended and grant certain privileges in terms of our ability to execute. If the project is funded, we would likely know sometime this fall. I do not believe the actual funding would be received until early in '26, based upon what I'm hearing. The way I worded the legislation is to grant me a little bit of flexibility because, based upon the final numbers that we have, we have the ability to adjust both the bargain sale and the ability to adjust the usage of the Little Miami Conservancy funds towards our local match. Otherwise, we're going to try to use those funds to reduce our grant request. So, Joe and I went over this resolution quite often to make sure it was worded properly so we don't have to come running back. So, I think that was all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Any questions or comments? Mr. Ping?
Yeah, just, you know, one of the things that came to my mind when we first started talking about this was just how excited we should be about the opportunity. The potential for this property is substantial in just its location. Being connected to Veterans Park, being across the river from Nesbit Park, you know, the views that are going to be maintained there are just, and maintained in perpetuity if we can pull off this grant. To me, that's really important. And, you know, there's a thing I saw a while back, and I haven't had a chance to research it, so I probably shouldn't be saying it, but I saw a thing that was talking about Mr. Lincoln taking his trip to Washington, DC, and going via Cincinnati and then on up through middle Ohio and so forth. And if I am correct on this, his train would have traveled up to Little Miami River, up the bike trail, which means that if you like a claim to fame sort of thing, Mr. Lincoln would have seen the scenery that we're talking about protecting now. And so, it's, I know that's a little bit over the top, I guess, but it just kind of excites me. You know, when I'm on the bike trail, that's one of the things, since I read that, I've been kind of thinking about it. It's just kind of neat that that's the case. And so, to be able to protect that, I think, is valuable. I also took the time, after I saw this on the agenda, that we were going to be able to talk about it tonight. I took the time to look up because I was thinking the Schildemiers have the oldest business, and that is correct. It's the oldest business in Loveland that is under a named name of a family. And they've been supporting of the city for so many years that, you know, hopefully, if we can pull this off when the time comes, there will be an opportunity for something that reflects that on the property. You know, I think we owe them a debt of gratitude that they are being willing to do something different than they had originally planned and make this all possible. So, to me, this is a pretty exciting moment. I'm certainly thankful, too, to Mr. Kennedy, pulling together all of these grants and things. I know is a very time-consuming task for him and staff both. And it's really good that they have taken the time to do that. And lastly, the Little Miami Conservancy, you know, they, I know, are thrilled because we're not clutter-cutting everything and putting in a brewery along the river like some others might, not to name any names. And so, you know, I mean, it's a very powerful thing in many regards. And so, it's not only exciting because of what it might become, but it's also exciting to see everybody come together and the support of the community that's behind it. You know, it's kind of hard not to think of why this would be a bad thing. If I got three negatives in there, too bad. I'm not a grandparent, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Hart?
Yeah, I would just echo a lot of what Mr. Ping said in terms of the excitement that should be felt around this potential or this opportunity. A lot of credit to the Schildemeyer family and what they're giving us the opportunity to do. They have certainly, as has been well documented, have had the opportunity to sell that to developers. And I don't know what that type of revenue would look like, but I'm sure it's fairly handy. So, I do appreciate them, and I think it's fairly well-known, they could have sold that developers and put buildings up there without much of any way of stopping that from the government side. You know, without getting any variances or reasons, they had the ability to build some other houses there. And to give us the opportunity as a city and as a community to keep that as a park and conserve that view, conserve that property, is just, it's quite the gift of a chance here. As my wife and I walked around town before, we've often talked about that property and how spectacular that view is. It's one of the most beautiful properties in all of Loveland. As you're walking down, it's quiet, it's peaceful. It's, to be able to maintain that in perpetuity so that other families can even walk onto that property, throw a blanket down, and just hang out for an afternoon, that, those opportunities are, that is, that's incredible. That's what progress looks like. Progress isn't always buildings. Progress isn't always building new stuff and bringing new businesses. And progress is protecting what is important to you. And in this case, that progress is protecting one of the most beautiful, you know, beautiful lots that we have that provides some of the most tranquil environment and that charm that we have in downtown Loveland. So, it's a super exciting opportunity here, and I have great confidence in our city staff. They've put an application together that's going to give us a really good opportunity as well. So, I'm appreciative of the work on this, but what a great day to be in Loveland.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Bateman?
I just, you guys got me super excited. Both of those really hit the nail on the head when it comes to the exuberance, I think, around this opportunity. And so, while we're, you know, giving credit across all parties and everyone that wants to share in the enthusiasm with this, certainly, I think, to Mrs. Clark for the agenda, for putting this in a sort of spotlight position. I think it's an opportunity for us to, you know, acknowledge the fact that this is something that like-minded folks, whether it's the people that spoke at the January 7th Planning and Zoning meeting, to try to explain why development wasn't good for the city and for those that agreed in kind with passing the, declining to move forward and then working on a new potential scenario. And I also am appreciative, Mr. Kennedy, that you brought up Cardinal and Claremont County Parks and how they've sort of helped to establish the sort of the through line to where we can preserve green space. So, even though this is a different scenario, one where we may need to take a more active role, I am complimentary of finding that partner in Little Miami Conservancy to sort of keep that spirit of mutual benefit alive. Because I think that as so many people packed that meeting, and I think all of us on the dais here are recognizing this as, you know, a really great opportunity, crossing our fingers and toes to make sure that this happens, this comes to fruition. I'm hopeful that they also have that same mutual appreciation for this opportunity and will grant this funding request and set us on the path forward. Last thing I'll say is that there is a little bit of, with all of these, you know, you know, new waters ahead of us, it's sometimes difficult to nail down the particulars. And so, I appreciate that with what we're committing is a fixed amount and not something that we can expect to be, it's going to take us out of the running for doing this. So, for having some parameters with which we can pass this opportunity to the taxpayers and those that are investing in this is good common sense from staff. So, thanks for putting that together.
Thank you. Any further comments? Yes, Mr. Goodyear?
I just want to say, I really appreciate, I look at this as an example of what I appreciate as a long-term intentional plan by city staff and council to try and preserve and maintain as many green spaces as possible within the city. And I think about, you know, for example, the Historic Planning Preservation Commission that was created by council and gives a framework to citizens, as we heard talked about earlier, gives a framework to citizens to have a say in things that happen here in the downtown area, this historic area. You know, Grailville is an example of the annexation that took place there, and now that property has been protected. And this is another example of what is not, you know, reactionary process, is an intentional, long-term process, intended to find opportunities and take those opportunities to preserve green space. And I just appreciate city staff and everyone here on council that's been involved in this for the long term because I think it's another great example of this intentional path we're on. And hopefully, we can continue this by getting this grant and maintaining this property as well.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, you're the only one left.
I guess I would just thank Dave for, Mr. Kennedy, for being creative with the way that I think you're having this score about as best as it can under the circumstances. And so, that took some creativity and some thought, but I think it's worthwhile, what we're doing. I hope we get it.
Thank you. This process did start many, many months ago, and I don't think that the word obsession covers what Dave has been, what his attitude has been towards this grant. I think staff would agree over the last several months. Because he's a perfectionist and because he cares, he has put his heart and soul into this and has obsessed over this grant to make it the very best it can be. And because he, like us, recognized this for what it is, which really is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to save this beautiful piece of property for not a few generations, but truly in perpetuity. This money means if we get Clean Ohio, you literally can never, ever build on that property. So, what a huge opportunity for the city. And it kind of follows, as Mr. Goodyear said, that, you know, I think four years ago, we were having the Grail discussion, and at that time, same thing. We weren't able to talk about what was happening behind the scenes, but that was exactly why we annexed those acres, so that we could control the destiny of those acres. And couldn't have dreamed that it would be as good as it is. What a wonderful, same thing, same money was used for most of those 200 acres. So, same opportunity. I think this one, not the 200 acres, it's a lot smaller, but in a lot of ways, certainly equal in importance to what we did with the Grail, given its location and its being along the river and right in the heart of our city. And I do think there is a bit of a misnomer because I see it, I should stay away from it, but I see on social media, people, and I saw it at the time when the first application for the SBT went through, essentially, what is council even thinking by considering this application? Well, what people in this room know, because you are paying attention, and what everybody needs to know is we can't just get an application and rip it up and decide not to consider it. Anybody's allowed to apply. Property owners have rights. Developers have a right to work with the property owner and bring forward a plan. We can't talk about it, consider it, and make a decision until it's in front of us. So, it's great that people show up. Certainly, I think it informs decisions that our boards and commissions make, but we must consider any plan that comes forward. And I personally was not concerned that that SPD was going to go through. I mean, this was, I believe, Mr. Kennedy can correct me, but I believe that that particular property has literally the most stringent zoning regulations on it of any piece of property in our entire city.
Yes.
So, given that, I really did not believe that Planning and Zoning was going to push through an SPD as applied for in that instance. And at some point, then, it sort of came, sometimes things take time, but got to the point of, what the heck? Let's just us get it and do, we can't, maybe we can do one better than we did with the Grail and actually own this property and control it ourselves and control what happens to it. And so, that process started a while ago, but here we are. And again, I think it's right circumstances, right time. I very much appreciate the Schildemeyer family for sure. They could have held out, and because while the SPD was, I think, never going to go through, there were things they could do at the top of that property that we could not have potentially stopped. If they were going to present something that was within our zoning, there's not a whole lot that the city can do to stop that. So, they were certainly, I think, very generous to come to join us in this, in this path that we're on and try to make this happen. And Little Miami Conservancy is just icing on the cake, I think, to have them as our third partner in this process. And so, much thanks to the Schildemeyer family, to Little Miami Conservancy. And really, I suppose they could have, in some ways, gone after this property themselves for suppose they could have, in some ways, gone after this property themselves to try to protect the riverfront, but they're entrusting us to be their partner in this. And so I appreciate that and appreciate, obviously, Dave being the quarterback and staff, Mr. Weinich and Ms. Richards helping with that. But this was a lot of effort. Now everybody just have happy thoughts and good thoughts that this happens. But I, as Mr. Bateman said, I'd like to think that the powers that be will see this for what it is, which truly, I don't think it's hyperbole to say a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to make this happen and to protect this really unique piece of property. So hopefully, hopefully, things will follow the right way for us. Does that lead anybody else to any other comment? All right, with that, read the resolution, please.
Resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for Ohio Public Works Commitment Clean Ohio Conservation Program funds for the acquisition of land for the preservation of open space and environmentally sensitive areas and commitment of local funding.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Resolution 84 is adopted by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. As far as announcement, LSFD had a community cookout last Wednesday that I think they were very happy with the turnout. That was at Nisbit. They will be having that again the next three Wednesdays. I guess tomorrow's the next one. That one's at McCoy Park from 5:00 to 7:00, then September 17th at Lever Park, 5:00 to 7:00, and September 24th at the Navajo Todd Lot, also 5:00 to 7:00. This Saturday, September 13th, from 10:00 to 2:00, is the LPD Heroes Fight Hunger. So please join our Loveland Police Department at Kroger for a law enforcement food drive. All items will benefit the Loveland Life Food Pantry. And actually, every Kroger store across Ohio will be hosting this event to support their local food banks. Obviously, ours is for our locals, so that's from 10:00 to 2:00 at Kroger. You have anything to add to that, Chief? All right. This Friday and Saturday is Little Miami River Chamber Alliance Oktoberfest. On Friday, it is from 4:00 to 10:00, and on Saturday, it is from noon to 10:00. Anybody that wants to join in the, we are having a keg procession, correct, Chief? He loves the keg procession. That starts at 5:00 from Hops. Anybody does that gets to, if they are of age, have a beer from the first tapped keg. Yes, that is on Saturday. I don't have any, we don't have all the, there's too much to even mention. So I know Little Miami River Chamber Alliance has the whole agenda, but I think you can get to it from our website as well. So I think that's it for announcements. Does anybody else have anything else?
I'll just...
Yes, sir.
Repeat one I spoke of at the last meeting. Ignite Hope is, that night is a fundraiser. It's part of the Loveland Care Center, and they are holding it at Little Miami Brewing Event Center on September 18th, 6:30 to 8:30. If anybody wants the QR code to get tickets, I have it here for you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, we do need a motion for executive session.
Executive session under Ohio revised... To be to purchasing property.
Second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
Motion carries six to zero. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the roll.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the roll.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Resolution 84 is adopted by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. As far as announcement, LSFD had a community cookout last Wednesday that I think they were very happy with the turnout. That was at Nisbit. They will be having that again the next three Wednesdays. I guess tomorrow's the next one. And that one's at McCoy Park from 5:00 to 7:00, then September 17th at Lever Park, 5:00 to 7:00, and September 24th at the Navajo Todd Lot, also 5:00 to 7:00. This Saturday, September 13th, from 10:00 to 2:00, is the LPD Heroes Fight Hunger. So please join our Loveland Police Department at Kroger for a law enforcement food drive. All items will benefit the Loveland Life Food Pantry. And actually, every Kroger store across Ohio will be hosting this event to support their local food banks. Obviously, ours is for our locals, so that's from 10:00 to 2:00 at Kroger. You have anything to add to that, Chief? All right. This Friday and Saturday is Little Miami River Chamber Alliance Oktoberfest. On Friday, it is from 4:00 to 10:00, and on Saturday, it is from noon to 10:00. Anybody that wants to join in the, we are having a keg procession, correct, Chief? He loves the keg procession. That starts at 5:00 from Hops. Anybody does that gets to, if they are of age, have a beer from the first tapped keg. Yes, that is on Saturday. I don't have any, we don't have all the, there's too much to even mention. So I know Little Miami River Chamber Alliance has the whole agenda, but I think you can get to it from our website as well. So I think that's it for announcements. Does anybody else have anything else?
I'll just...
Yes, sir.
Repeat one I spoke of at the last meeting. Ignite Hope is, that night is a fundraiser. It's part of the Loveland Care Center, and they are holding it at Little Miami Brewing Event Center on September 18th, 6:30 to 8:30. If anybody wants the QR code to get tickets, I have it here for you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, we do need a motion for executive session.
Go on to executive session under Ohio revised... To be to purchasing property.
Second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the roll.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the roll.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the roll.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the roll.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the roll.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the roll.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the roll.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the roll.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the roll.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the roll.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the roll.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the roll.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the roll.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.